This is the September 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome, everybody. Fairly short agenda this evening. We'll start with approval of the September 8th minutes. And do we have any additions, corrections, deletions?
I would suggest one thing where it says that we, there would be a water conservation discussion between Planning and Zoning Commissioners, the Water Department, and the City Council. I would say City Council Representative/ S. It's not needed for council. So, I just don't want that to be was needed.
Okay, that's good. And Mike, can we just have Jennifer?
Catch that.
Catch that and make that change. So, okay. So, do we have a motion to approve?
Move their approval.
Okay, Joel's motion, second. And Dennis, second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. Next item is the public comment period. I don't see anybody out there that's anxious to join us today, so we'll move right on past that one. And next item is a proposed final subdivision plat for Rolling Hills 9th Edition. And I think you're up, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So, before you tonight, this is Rolling Hills 9th Edition, the final plat review. And this is the property outlined in right at the center of your screen. So, you can see the extension of Third Street. This is just the latest addition to the Rolling Hills additions, which include Atani, Sixth Street, Third Street, Rolling Hills, Panorama. Those are all prior additions. This is just the next 10-lot phase in that development. And so, looking at your screen there, you see Third Street, photos from 2018. So, majority of the lots have been developed along that segment of Third Street, as well as the infrastructure's been put into place up to this property. To the north is Harvest Hills 2nd Edition, which was also approved earlier this year. And Moser Park is located to the northeast there. So, it's 2.3 acres in size. The preliminary plat was to create 10 lots ranging from a little over 7,300 square feet to 8,461 square feet in size. And then, June 21st of this year, council approved the 9th Edition preliminary plat with two conditions. The first one is related to stormwater control analysis and design. Needed to be in accordance with the city's stormwater runoff control standards. There wasn't a plan that was in place or proposed at the time. It went through preliminary plat, and so that was a recommended condition from engineering. And then, the other recommended condition was the applicant extend Third Street a little 19.87 feet to the east to align with the eastern property boundary, a lot 6, block 2, with a proposed subdivision. And then, on September 13th, the applicant submitted the final subdivision plat to be reviewed by PNC and City Council. And this is the plat that was originally submitted to our office. So, this was the one included in your packet. And I did send out a revised one this morning to the commission. I'll just point out the changes. On the southwestern corner there, Lot 1, a block 2, the minimum lot area is 7,000 square feet for the R2 zone. So, there was just a slight adjustment that was made there between preliminary and final, which is common. And that one's slightly under the 7,000, and so the applicant needed to adjust that to bring that into compliance. And then, over there on the eastern, same block on the south side, Lot 6, the minimum lot width is 60 feet. And you can see there that this one was 55.43, so that needed to be increased to 60 feet, as well as the property, the plat boundary needed to go directly to the north instead of at a diagonal line there. So, those two, those three adjustments were made, and this was the revised final plat. And so, the Lot 1 there, block 2 on the south side's now over 7,000. Got the 60-foot width on Lot 6. And then, we've got the portion that goes up. The plat boundary jogs here because this is Moser Park. What will occur is that this doesn't need to be included in the plat boundary, but the road will be developed essentially directly north of the, if this line were to be projected to the north. That's where the road would end, and then it'll eventually continue in the future. So, pretty simple addition here, just 10 lots. And staff has reviewed, you know, with those changes, it's now in conformance with city and state code requirements. And we're recommending, commission recommend approval of the final plat for Rolling Hills 9th, the City Council with no conditions. Certainly entertain any questions you have.
Joel?
So, the condition about stormwater has been satisfied?
It has. What they ended up doing was there's a, just because of the small nature of this area, they looked at the stormwater detention pond that was actually at the intersection of Third and Crestview, I believe. So, it's just, I guess, off the screen here. But that's where the stormwater detention pond is for Rolling Hills 8th Edition. So, they were able to actually increase the size in the orifice, size of that as well in the center, and that, and run revised stormwater analysis report, and that would accommodate the stormwater runoff for this portion of the property. So, yeah, engineering was satisfied with that analysis.
And the second requirement was also satisfied? I've forgotten what it was.
Extending Third Street?
Okay, I guess that's...
Yeah, yeah.
That's what you described, okay.
Yeah. Previously, I believe the boundary ended somewhere here. We wanted that increased to this end, that property corner there, and then to the north. So, yeah, now it's all the way to the end of the property boundary.
And Mike, the extension of Third Street, I guess I'm also looking at the north side where it comes down and makes this strange angle. They didn't have to, I guess I'm looking at that street and going, okay, so what happens after, after that?
I think that's what you were just saying, that they're making them go a little further straight now. Or are you talking about after that?
Yeah, that's just the corner of the Moser Park property there.
Oh, good, okay.
So, you know, the city doesn't need to be a signatory, so if it's being platted over the Moser Park property, the city would have to be a signatory on the plat.
Okay.
The developer can do those improvements on the park property without having it to actually be within the subdivision plat itself, and that's why they've jogged around that corner right there.
Okay.
But essentially, the road will just go directly to the north here.
Okay.
So, it'll be this full width of roadway. It'll just be extended, you know, on this corner of the park property as well as down here. So, road's not going to make that jog. It'll be, you know, it'll be square at the end.
Is that a road that continues beyond this point?
It does, yeah. It's planned to go, I mean, this is going to provide access to Moser Park, so it's planned to go to the northeast and eventually connect all the way up here, and eventually connects with D Street. Future D Street extension up in that area is our thoroughfare plan with that as shown. So, yeah, that, originally, the applicant had submitted a preliminary plat that showed this entire area. So, this property here is also owned by Atani Development. There is just, you know, some negotiations between city staff and the applicant regarding the alignment of Third Street through this area. There was quite a bit of grading that was occurring and fill that was happening on the Moser Park property that we were comfortable with. So, we would like, wanted the road shifted further to the south, to be a little further removed from the park property. We were just concerned that it was compromising some of the usable area of the park. And so, the applicant wanted, had an immediate need to develop these 10 lots, wanted to keep going because they were running out of lots in the Rolling Hills 8th Edition. I think there's only one or two lots left. And they wanted to keep moving and get some foundations in and infrastructure in this year. And so, while they worked on that other phase, and so they decided to break that up.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike? So, Mike, on our motion for approval, do you need us to make a comment as corrected or just as filed?
I think we'll just make a note of that in the minutes, and, yeah, we don't need a motion.
You do need a motion for approval, though?
We do.
Right, yeah. I was gonna say. So, okay. Anybody care to move for approval of the...
I move that we approve the Rolling Hills 9th Edition final plat.
Okay, motion by Victoria.
I'll second.
And Dennis, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mike. All right, so, next item, we'll see how long this goes. We haven't done this for a long time. We're going to talk about 15-minute city, and I confess a struggle with this. I'll just lead off with a couple of comments here. I spent most of my adult life living in fairly large metropolitan areas, and when I moved to Moscow, I thought I was moving to a neighborhood. And the whole, the whole town felt like a neighborhood to me compared to a lot of the other places that I lived. The other thing that I struggle with is a lot of the 15-minute type of neighborhoods that you see, particularly in larger cities. And if you noticed in this book, almost every one of these example cities were large metropolitan areas. So, as an example, Belltown in Seattle, which is a very high-density, lot of high-rises, and it's the density issue that gets to me. Because if you want to have these services like we talk about in this bingo, the, you know, some of these are available groceries, pharmacies, libraries, doctor's office, vet's offices, you know, and restaurants. You get those when you've got a lot of density to support the business. And that's where I struggle. I like the concept, I'm just saying that I'm at a loss for how we implement that.
I think we do. We just haven't scaled back. We have neighborhood business in mixed residential areas.
Right.
You know, we're starting to work more on transit. We're working more on walkability. We're working more on shared streets. We're not at big city level, but we're doing it on smaller scale, which is what I really liked about it, is like, oh, good, that's what we're doing, oh, good.
Well, I agree. We are doing a lot of that, and particularly with the biking. I mean, a 15-minute walk compared to a 15-minute bike ride really expands the, I got out Google Earth today and started drawing circles around to see distances and places, and, you know, a 30-minute walk is a 10-minute bike ride in many cases. I think where the biggest impediments I see is all the grocery stores are kind of off in the peripheries, and so it's a little harder to include that. But restaurants are within that, coffee shops are within that, churches are within that. So, I agree with you. And if you look at, for example, the development, I, the name escapes me, but it's the one that's down off Sixth Street near Patty's.
Gateway, Gateway.
Gateway. I mean, that's going to be a perfect example of a walkable neighborhood. So, anyway, I just, I had to confess my shortcomings when trying to grasp how we're going to implement some of these things. But, and I agree with Victoria, we do a lot of stuff here that I think is appropriate.
Well, and the new urbanism was mentioned in the first article, which is what Woodbury Edition is doing, and it follows right along. It doesn't go into extreme detail exactly what new urbanism is, because I think the whole book is the new, the whole portion is the new urbanism. And they talked about senior living and Gateway was...
Oh, probably about six months ago, but...
I'm sure I've got it.
Take my copy if you like.
The people who write these don't come from rural America. They come from the city. And consequently, it's a little tricky for them to perceive what it's like for people like us. And our town is really, has been all this time, just one village. There's no doubt, there's no doubt about that. Is it a little larger? In other words, let's say in New York, the West Village has always had something around 25,000 or 30,000 people. Jane Jacobs would say that if you don't have, until you have 20, between 20 and 30,000 is a neighborhood. That's her view. I mean, most of us talk about the people across the street and call it a neighborhood, but that isn't any, it's not particularly relevant to the way we work. But we're on wonders, and I know Joel and I have talked about it over the years, when is this town going to morph into something slightly larger than a village? And I think we're on the cusp of it.
We're on the verge of it, yes.
My guess is that 30,000 is about when that begins to happen, and even the new subdivision out past Veronica is beginning to, well, I hoped I'd taught Mark something, but he's beginning to think about a little bit of retail, you know, just a neighborhood retail that would allow people there to have, you know, some access. But I think we have to, we can't get too excited about the words that the city people use. It's great stuff. I know when I lived in New York, it was just a shock to me to find out how much stuff was clumped in, you know? I lived on the 42nd Street, on Second Avenue, 42nd, and I needed to build some shelves. And I thought, damn, there's not going to be, I have no idea if there's a lumberyard in New York. There is. You'd be surprised. And so, just six blocks away from me was the Bad Boys Lumber outfit. You went in a door, and back in behind the building was a bunch of the kinds of things that you needed. But, you know, the city people, and I, here I was, a guy from Moscow, and I thought I was going to go down and buy a few boards at the thing and carry them back to my apartment. Well, people thought I was crazy. You could see the shock in their eyes, because I'm walking down the street with a couple of boards. Because how do you get the stuff to your apartment? You hire a people to deliver it, and people pick it up, and no one takes, no one has a pickup in New York City. Give me a break, you know? So, anyway, it's a little tricky to, I think the concepts are just fine, but we tend to be a little more spread out.
Yeah.
You know, what...
I think a lot of the difference is that realistically, we do rely more on the automobile than somebody walking in New York. I feel quite comfortable with calling us a neighbor still. I figure that you take your 15-minute walk and expand it to what's probably about two miles maybe, and that encompasses everything.
It does.
And, well, I, I'm a walker. I cover the entire northeast quadrant of Moscow with my walking. And, you know, that quadrant at least is walkable.
Yeah, yeah.
But it doesn't have much in the way of lumberyards.
Yeah. No, and I agree with you, expand this out a little bit, and it's all there.
Yeah.
One of the things that, I don't know if it's an irony or not, but we've had two of the subdivisions, the one that we just recently did, Woodbury, is it? And then Harvest Hills, both had a neighborhood business component in it. And what was interesting to me, because that's the kind of thing that we're talking about, but there was a fair amount of kickback in both cases from people not wanting to have a business in their neighborhood. So, I'm not quite sure how we reconcile that as we move forward, but I'm glad that our code allows for that, and I think we should continue it, but...
I think there's more of it out there than they realize. They don't necessarily think of, oh, and maybe they don't use the convenience stores, but other people do, you know? Maybe they don't use whatever, but, you know, where I have, the vets just down the street. There's Taj grocery store, little convenience stores close by, and a lot of, I see people in my neighborhood walk to those, I walk to that, push the cat in a stroller to the mat, you know, because it's getting harder for me to carry, you know? But, yeah, I was going to say that it mentions that walkability is relative, and it does change, because I could walk faster a few years back than what I can now. And I thought of something, we need benches, because I plan some of my walk, walks, if you give me a bench once in a while so I can sit down and recoup a bit, I can keep going.
They kind of talk about that in one of the...
And crossing streets, which was in the mobility workshop, because some of these lights are, I needed another second to get across. Now that I'm walking with canes, I need more than another second to get across. And walking, I remember not that long ago, walking home on Third Street, and somebody in a wheelchair was trying to cross over where Taj is, that's where he was going, and the traffic just really doesn't see them. And if I'd gotten to him before somebody else did, I was going to ask him if he needed help, I would have walked him across, because they'll see two, but they won't see one. I've noticed that every time I cross Third Street, there's one person they don't see, two people they usually do. But another pedestrian came and walked him across the street, because cars just don't see them, you know? And so, so those things, those things are mentioned in here, and there are things that we need. I really want more benches. I plan my walk for benches. And pocket parks, because Otten's Park gives me a place to sit. Even though I'm really close to home, sometimes I still need to sit for a few minutes before I keep going, you know? And it's not that I'm worn out, it's just I'm handicapped, you know, at this point. So, it helps me get the rest of the necessary...
No, I think that, one thing that I do take from it, reading it, is that we're doing a pretty darn good job of making our community, our sidewalk requirements. I mean, some of the old neighborhoods didn't do such a good job, but, you know, that's, we're doing a good job of making sure that bikes, walking, and of course, paths. So, I take a lot of encouragement over it. I just struggle with the scaling it down to our size of town is where I...
One of the things, I watch, sometimes I just happen to catch it when I'm watching TV, there's your series, 10 Parks That Changed the World, or The Nation, or something, and 10 Streets and 10 Towns. And part of, one of them, I've watched some of it recently, part of it was talking about post-war, we went to suburbs, and this is, we go to the suburbs because it's cheaper to live in a town, although that is changing. And the Affordable Housing Study that PEP did through PEP Partners for Economic Prosperity showed that people are moving out because they can't find affordable housing, but they're paying so much more in heat and transportation that as that is offset the savings, you're going to wind up wanting to move back in town. And then, you get into the density issues, the twin homes, the townhouses, so that they can get back into town and not have all that moving out part. And it surprises me because of what you were saying, because back then, you had the mom and pop stores and the apartments up where they, where they lived was upstairs, and it was normal, you know? And so, I'm surprised when we get people coming here that don't like the little neighborhood business, because they're of an age that they should have grown up with that. Because I'm of age where I grew up with that, and I don't know why they're so opposed to it, because to me, it's natural, and I like to see it.
And the kids, I think that was the big, that's what I remember.
Well, you have to learn how to cross the street, I mean...
Well, the kids, and they're having struggles at D Street right now, I think that was a big thing.
But they're really objecting to the neighborhood business, and I don't, I don't see, I don't understand what that problem is. I remember being in Inglewood, Colorado, and mom and dad sending us over to the mom and pop grocery store to pick up some stuff, you know, it was blocks away, but...
It's okay when it's there, but when it's being built, and right now, you're looking at pheasants, it's just a different...
Yeah. Circle K went out maybe 30 years too soon, when it was next to Short's Chapel on Sixth Street.
Right, right.
There was, I didn't realize there had been one.
Oh, yes. It only lasted for a couple of years, but it was there.
Interesting. Well, and that's part of the density issue, is it takes a lot of people to support a business, and a lot of people got to be using it. And, you know, a handful of people are just not going to make it economically viable for somebody to open a business. So, that's, that's kind of another piece of this, but, so I don't know.
I think, I think Nels and I were on the commission when the Circle K was proposed out there over, I think it was neighborhood business that was created, more or less, for their purposes, I believe. And there was considerable opposition to the idea of neighborhood business.
I can believe it, yeah, yeah.
So, the, one of the dilemmas with the new things like the Circle K's or whatever is that they invariably were built to deal with cars and people, and so there was always five or six parking spaces in front, which didn't work as well as it, as it might have. I know to educate people, you almost have to go to a bigger city to help them see. Boise was just large enough to have a couple of, to speak of our neighborhoods. And for many years, they went into, they just got terrible. Now, in Boise, Hyde Park, if you know Boise, if you've ever seen, Hyde Park has become almost like a Boise regional treasure. I mean, the Hyde Park, the little buildings and dining and what have you, and so it's gotten to be dramatically popular. Now, I do think the people in the neighborhood have to learn too, because cars drive in from all over the region to Hyde Park now, and that means that there's cars parked along the side of the street. And it, depending on how you've been raised, it sort of bothers you.
Yeah, well, we live in a small town where things go slow, so you have this lovely view across the wheat field for a long time, but someday, somebody decides to develop that land, and you don't own the view, you know? The view goes away. Or, you know, I used to watch the trains go by, when the front, I'd run to the front door, I loved the trains, you know? When the train went through and the granaries there, so that's never going to turn into houses. Well, granary, and the trains go away, and so that changed. And it's a bit of a shock, but you do have to learn that it's, unless you bought the property, it's not your property. And things, if you live somewhere where things move faster, you're not as shocked as you are when you live where things go really slow, and you're, you're not thinking this is going to happen.
So, as we move forward, obviously, we're not going to have discussions like this every, every meeting, but if there are other topics that people think would be of interest, let me know. We can schedule them as time permits for some of the meetings. We had such a busy hearing schedule for a while, it was a little tough to work some of this in, but I certainly want to encourage us to continue at least some level of discussion. And I don't know if I would exactly call this continuing education, but I think it's good for us to have the conversation, so...
I would want to mention too, because it talked about ag land, and we're hearing this from, from people in the hearings, that you're taking ag land. Well, you're going to grow, you got to grow somewhere, you know? So, you're going to grow up and you're going to grow out, but you take the little marginal piece of ag land on the edge, and especially if you densify it at all in some way, so that you're not taking the whole big piece of ag land. And it remains viable and it, you know, but you have to grow somewhere. What are you going to do? Pitch a tent by the side of the road and say, that's where you're going to live? You know, you got it, you know? So, but, and it mentions that in here, that just because we... we have ag land doesn't mean we can't ever use any of it for anything else. And, you know, we're not going out miles beyond the city limit, or beyond the last neighborhood and, miles is too many, but we're not going way out and leaving islands of ag that are difficult to use and, and sprawling. To me, that's not sprawl, that's just conservative growth, sprawl when we go way out.
I think the danger to ag land is, is not the, the possibility of rather dense developments on the edge, the danger to ag land is taking large farms and dividing them up into twenty acres and, and, per...
Big farms.
Oh, you can see how people worry about it. I mean, Boise has done a brilliant job of blowing out all the farms within twenty miles of Boise, so you can see that it's, it's, it's an issue. I mean, there isn't any other place to move if, if the city's gonna grow, so the idea of growth is something that I think we need to, to talk about, and I think growth and, and the water, we haven't had, we haven't brought...
No, and we wanted to still do that.
But, in my mind, that's something we just need to continue to talk about with, and try and share with our, with the rest of the citizenry, because we are in, we do have a problem, a water issue. And my guess is that it won't be solved until we get to a crisis. I don't think we're going to solve it, because, why? Because we don't have the kind of, the kind of funds that San Francisco and Boston and New York had to be able to go out and, out forty miles away in the hills and buy ten thousand acres. I mean, you'd be surprised, in New York City, there are still people screaming about the fact that New York did that a hundred and fifty years ago. There are still people who can remember that my great-grandfather lived down on the bottom of that lake and it was the worst thing in the world to, because he was a nice guy and he had good grandchildren and all that. And so we can't possibly have a reservoir, but if we were, if we were ever gonna build a reservoir, we would run into the same thing. We'd have to take over some land that somebody owned and somebody would be disappointed in that choice.
So Mike and Maureen and I were at the city council meeting Monday, a long city council meeting, and this came up because of the Woodbury petition, 'cause they, they did the hearing that night. And there were some direct questions directed to some staff about the water issue, and the, the statement is that we're not in immediate danger of running out of water. We need to plan ahead. So we're being proactive and we're planning ahead so that when we get to that point, we're ready for it, and, and the mayor says we'll have water for the next hundred years or so once we get there. But, but because we're also focusing on it, I think it makes people feel like, oh, is the tap going dry tomorrow? Tap's not going dry tomorrow. We're told, we were told that meaning that there's plenty of water now, but you have to plan ahead or there won't be, 'cause, you know, so there's that double edged, if you're being proactive. And I'm glad people care about it, 'cause I care about it, we all care about it, but, but...
Yeah, it's a tough balancing act. I, you know, a couple of the comments during one of the hearings was, can't you, can't you pause this development? And I got to thinking, until the water issue is resolved, so I got to thinking, I moved here twenty-five years ago and people were saying the same thing, so if we had paused development then, we, we would've had none of the development that's been really beneficial to the community, I think, so...
I think that was brought up, even.
So, you know, it's, finding the balance point is gonna be important and, you know, I wouldn't mind, and, and that brings up another issue, I think it was mentioned at the meeting that I didn't make the last time, is having Mia come and talk with us at some point in time on some of, and, and the reason I'm saying this is that I, one of the things that you have to be particularly careful about with a body like ours is that if you deny somebody development in their land, there are some legal issues there. It could be viewed as a taking, and it's a place you don't wanna go, I can tell you from personal experience. So I would love to hear from Mia about, you know, some of those issues so that we kind of have a, a sense of, of what parameters are, are surrounding us as well when we make these decisions, so, I was just a...
Yeah, and, along with the water, the thing we're talking about, because we're getting really close to coming up with narrowing down those alternatives and being presented, not we, we as a city, being presented with that. And then it takes another ten years to get the grant, grants for funding, 'cause we can't fund it all on our own, but giving the granting and the nitty-gritty planning and the site picked out and the water rights picked out and all that stuff. That's that proactive part where we're jumping on it earlier, because it's not gonna happen tomorrow, it's gonna take a while, and then we're gonna need it, but then they feel like we'll have it solved.
Maureen, I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah, I have no control of the speaking app, but I would just say...
Yes, you can.
There are a couple of things between, one is to say that we aren't having a water summit on October twenty-first, the day? But including not just Mia, but I would have another meeting with Tyler, because I think that what happened to us is that a lot of people, just like happens to you all, come up here and they're like, stop growth, stop it now, get an answer to water before all that stuff happens. And Tyler was incredibly helpful yesterday, on Monday, on two things that I kind of jumped at me, and one is, is that since nineteen ninety-two to nineteen, to twenty-twenty, our population has grown thirty-five percent and our water usage has reduced by fourteen percent due to conservation. That was the first one. They also had numbers there showing on a chart with, you know, someone could share, Mike had those numbers, those numbers in terms of how many people have come in, how many houses have been built, so that you kind of have a, a context when people come at you with that stuff. I think that that was really helpful. The other comment that Tyler gave was, we started looking at this stuff maybe nineteen ninety, nineteen sixty-two or something, if we had stopped all growth then, we would still have a water issue today because we have a shortage of water. So I thought in terms of responding to the, to many of the issues that came up, it was really helpful for Mike to have his chart up there in terms of how fast are we really growing, because somebody gets annexed and they may want four hundred houses, it may take them ten years and they've gotta come back at each one of those increments, but the other part of that was answering the issue of water. And so it was, there's, you know, they're looking at it, we're in the process of looking at it, and I thought it was really helpful that even if we stopped all growth in sixty-two and we were dead now, the answer was, we'd still have a water issue because we're still not replenishing Ran Ron.
Right.
So that adds to your list if I were you.
Well, in fact, we talked some time ago that we would like to have Tyler come and, and talk with us. We were gonna have Gina come in as well. I did talk with Gina and we, we haven't firmed up anything particularly, but I think it would be very helpful to have them at a, at a meeting that, where we don't have public hearings and everything, where we could just have kind of an education session with, with them. So I still am really interested in pursuing that.
And I would throw up Mike's two slides, I'm gonna put you on the bus there, Mike, but he put all these slides together in terms of how helpful it was. Somehow we've gotten so much development, and Mike can tell you how many developments we've had, not developments, but how many pieces of property that we've already annexed in and blah, blah, but how quickly those houses get built, just because they all get annexed doesn't mean we're gonna have six hundred new houses next week. And so his chart that goes up and down and why it goes that way, and it was a really very, very helpful chart for all of us to have, so I felt like that was the meeting for us, that I walked into, that we had more people in that audience than I've ever seen. And so it was good that we were prepared, Mike had his charts there, Tyler can, you know, give those information, so it probably may be helpful for you as well, because I'm sure you get a tap as well.
Yeah, Tyler's who I was referring to, I just wasn't putting his name out there on the spot, but yes, he can speak to this. We had such a huge audience because we had the climate justice, they'd give a presentation, so there were a lot of young people here, and so you had that whole crowd, and then you had the Woodbury hearings, where you had that whole crowd. So, and, and a lot of them stuck around for a while. I was kind of surprised at the end that there were that many people still here.
Mike, I'll, I'll get back together with you and we'll start kind of trying to plan out when we could do this. There's obvious that, I mean, look at the discussion tonight about fifteen-minute walks and we turned it into a water discussion, so, well, and it's important, and I, and I think that I, we need to keep moving forward with this, it's that important, so I, I think that we'll, I'll get together with you and we'll try to figure out how we can organize some kind of a, a education session, as it were, so...
Thank you, Maureen.
Okay, anything else that anybody wants to, Joel's on next for a transportation...
That's, that's easy. We, we talked about the D Street and Mountain View intersection, which I think you've all been introduced to that, I think in the newspaper also, there's some proposed traffic revisions there and it'll be viewed as experimental and, you know, basically the problem is eight lanes of traffic approaching an intersection, four of them turn lanes, nobody has any idea who has the right of way.
That's for sure.
And I'd hate to be a crossing guard out in the middle of that.
I just go there. The person they wrote about.
So, that, that was interesting and we also talked a bit, a little bit about some future grant proposals, so the next meeting will be the day after our next meeting.
That timing works out really well. Victoria, did you say you had?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Scott, anything for, any, anything else for the good of the order? Guess next, oh, Mike?
I do have an announcement. Idaho Association of American, Idaho chapter of the American Planning Association's having their annual conference. It's online format, and so I was gonna send the link out to everybody, it's relatively inexpensive, and so we have funding for that in our budget, so if anybody wants to attend, you can just attend whichever sessions you like. It usually goes over three days and there's multiple sessions per day, and so you can tune in to whichever ones interest you, but there is one where there's a few lawyers in the Treasure Valley area that are talking about legal aspects with stopping, you know, concerns with stopping growth and other issues like that, that's, that's, seems pretty interesting. And I think that's on a Friday. But it's coming up beginning of October, I believe it's the sixth through the eighth, so I'll get that out to everybody and then we can, if anybody would like to attend any of those sessions, we'll get you signed up.
Yeah, I think we've got fifteen hundred dollars sitting in the budget to cover the cost, so...
I will say that we went to the, I went to the Idaho Association of Cities meeting down in Boise and both, Becky and I went to the one that was on planning and zoning, and they had three people there talking about how do you deal with the zoning, you have the, just the idea is pretty fundamental that says, when someone applies, the zoning code that applies at that time governs, even if people don't want that to happen anymore. And, but what can you do in the meantime in terms of talking about water and talking about affordable housing and talking about those issues? And I thought it was an incredibly helpful one, so if they have one on that, I'd say that was a really, that was the best one I attended.
Super. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? We have a meeting, the next meeting is October thirteenth, so we got a couple, three weeks here, and other than that, I guess we'll declare a meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.